At this time. And I'm going to. Read the governor's mask update. Again, the updated CDC guidance continues to state that individuals who are fully vaccinated may, as a general matter, resume many of the activities that they that they engage in prior to the pandemic without wearing a mask or staying six feet apart. Except where otherwise regulated by federal, state, or local laws, rules, or regulations. In response to the recent spread of the Delta variant, however, the CDC's updated guidance does recommend that even fully vaccinated persons wear masks or face coverings when indoors if other risk factors are present. In light of the information provided by the CDC, in an order to maximize protection protection of vulnerable individuals from the Delta variant, the Department of Public Health now advises that a fully vaccinated person should wear a mask or face covering when indoors and not in your own home. If you have a weakened immune system, or if you are at increased risk for severe disease because of your age or in underlying medical condition. Or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system, is at increased risk for severe disease, or is unvaccinated. So. That said, we're going to first item is. Okay. We got a vote with the chair, planning board.
I'd make a motion that John Matthews. Be voted in as chair of the language.
Have a motion seconded? All in favor? That's all right. Thank you. The second item is 25 Allen Street, Mountain View. Site plan review, additional outdoor seating is. Good. Linda Wright, could you just identify yourself, please? Yep, you're the principal. Yeah, okay. As it says, you're looking for some additional seating outdoors?
Yeah, exactly the kind of area. So when I interview, they wanted to do the water. You could nicely do that, and I should do the plan achieving.
Okay.
I haven't turned here now, but we're looking to have it up permanent.
You're gonna keep it up all winter?
No, I take it down for zero.
Okay.
But to have it going forward, to have it being permanent there. So let me do it during the focus.
Yeah. So are you looking? Um, when, and refresh us, please, your operation month? Would they, what, are you closing this year?
Yeah, so Sunday through March, second to March till October 31st.
Okay. So you'll be closing this weekend?
Correct.
The tent will come down?
Yeah, come down, I'll take it down and then put it back on again.
Any questions?
So. I'm, I'm, I'm not clear. Is this to be able to see? Every year or do you?
Well, our building structure. It's, it's, I have a tent up there now, it's seasonal or whatever, I take it down, but additional seating for what I normally have. If you're facing out, you have two tables on the side.
Right.
So now we opened up the back.
Right.
Area, so it'll be back there.
With a tent?
With a tent.
With a tent. All right, that's what I was trying to understand. If we're still, we're talking about a tent.
You are correct.
Um, okay.
So it's not a permanent structure?
Not a permanent structure.
Right, and what she's looking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking to go ongoing that every year, come the second week of March, in that timeframe, you'd like to erect the tent, keep it up until the last day of October in that timeframe. And at that point, take it back down.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, this, this just, this is a site plan review, so we would be amending the site plan. Would be provided, site, correct?
Yes. Then what?
So. So what I'm thinking is, the tent originally went up. I'm wondering under what specific regulation the tent was allowed to go up? Whether we can extend that, has there been any impact to actual overall seating? And I guess my question is, the tent went up because you couldn't do, you couldn't have as many folks sit inside because of social distancing.
Correct.
So now, you use, so, will the interior space go back to the same spacing it was?
Yeah, the interior is open, good, now, yes. So that's, that's the thing. But even without that, even without the COVID, it would still, I would probably would still have another table.
Yeah, no.
Just because it was never opened there before.
I get it, I'm just, where my mind's going is, you had the outdoor seating.
Yes.
But your indoor seating was minimized, so you had the potential to have less people at the restaurant.
Right.
So your parking spots, your parking lot, parking spaces haven't changed.
Okay.
So that's kind of where my mind is going is, does the additional additional 32 people, does the parking still work?
Yeah.
Adding additional 32 people to it.
Because a lot of our, a lot of our customers are coming though. So it's not, it's not always. And all that parking isn't needed, so, you know, the, the level comes down.
But there's probably something specified on how many spaces, spaces per seat, right? And so that's, so it's not so much whether or not, business-wise, you need the extra spaces that I have to dig in and see how many parking spots you need per person at the restaurant? Because if, if you normally have 38, and you're doubling the size.
Yeah, well, then people still park in the parking lot, occasionally, you know.
Right, but that's not part of your site plan, you know what I mean? So that's kind of where I'm, don't know, I don't know how I knew about it, so I gotta look at it.
So. Yeah. Um. This came about, and you were referred to us by the health inspector, am I correct in saying that?
Correct.
Yes, so Lori asked you to come to us. You backed it up, some of this, some of this has to do with the septic increased, any increase in water usage or whatever. So I'm reading from Gary's letter.
Yeah.
Yep, and it doesn't look like that you've exceeded the allowed 1454. So with that being said, the septic system should be capable and be any increased.
Yeah, below, factor below it, yeah.
Yeah.
One space for three seats. Yeah, one space per three seats.
One or two spaces.
Ninety-four to ninety-six.
Yeah, so you're, so you're short a spot.
So, but she's got parking thirty plus, you're saying. Oh, down at the bottom.
What, what is the, Mr. Chairman, what is the thirty plus?
So, you're asking.
Is there more, is there more than thirty spaces?
So, asking the wrong person.
Okay, thirty spaces, Charlie.
Yeah.
Just thirty, right?
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. You, when you put the thirty plus, Linda, you were saying that the overflow usually parks next door. Am I correct in saying? You got thirty plus down at the bottom.
Down the bottom, right, yeah.
So basically, what you're saying is that any overflow goes to the next door.
Yeah.
So you gotta figure out somewhere to draw some spaces.
And, I mean, that's, yeah.
Well, there are, well, see, then they park on the side there as well, too, but I didn't find because they parked there, but it's not.
Yeah, I think so. As much of a pain in the butt as it is, we have to have the documents back up that there's actually thirty-two spaces.
Mr. Chairman, would it also be a possibility to eliminate one table under the tent?
And that's a possibility also.
She's got the space for two more parking spots, I would just drive the two parking spots in. Though with a number of seats, you need to have thirty-two, that's what I came up with, divided ninety-six. So if you've got the space somewhere else on your property to have two parking spots, I think if we have to review the plan that has the thirty-two spots, or review the plan that has.
Right.
Less stables.
Yeah, so the easiest thing would be to remove a table.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, but now we still had to revise the site plan, she submitted, so, right, so. I entertain a motion to revise the plan that's being submitted, to remove one of the tables. Okay, I see what you're saying, to have her revise. Okay. While we're here, while we're.
I'm sitting there like, why does she just want to add two states?
Well, it might be easier to do the tape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I would say that makes sense.
Sure, Linda, come on up, if you would. What I'm gonna ask you to do is somehow or another. So would you just cross one of those tables out and issue it? Remove four, please. And that's what we'll put in the file, yeah, cross one out. Under the seating, take four.
And then she's got to take something out of the tent, she's got to cross one, oh, she did, okay.
Let's see.
Yes, please. A lot of people check.
Well.
Yeah, the, the thirty-two needs to get adjusted as well.
You guys are okay? Motion to approve, or have you got more questions?
Let me just finish reading.
Go ahead, yeah. This is for now.
I don't have any other. Sounds I'd move to approve the revised site plan that shows ninety-two available seats, twenty-eight in the tent, and thirty parking spaces.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. Next on the agenda is 711 Main Street, site plan review, section seven point one for home occupation, express junk removal. Okay, how you doing? Could you state your name?
Omari Murray.
Omar?
Omari.
Amari.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you, and can you tell us what your plan is?
Pretty much call me, and I would come and watch the item.
So, you're not gonna store any junk?
No.
Right.
Once I get called and I remove it, I go straight to the dump.
Right to the dump, yeah. Um, and you won't be moving, bringing it to hand, right?
No, I want to get it out.
Right, yes, no, I mean, you won't be taking it to the hand and dump, right? Okay. So, this would basically, what you're going to be doing is just a office?
Yeah.
And the trucks that you're gonna use to pick up. Where are they gonna be?
It's just one personal truck, it's just a pickup truck.
Just a pickup truck?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it lettered?
No.
So one, one pickup truck, is it a like F-150, F-350, or a big?
It's actually a small, it's a mini, not a mini truck, mid-sized.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I just want to make sure it's not a roll-off.
No.
Roll-off truck or anything like that, and you said no lettering. Will customers be coming to?
No.
The house?
Okay.
And then, says here, no deliveries, no employees. So basically, you're just using it as an office for invoice.
I have no issues.
Questions? I move we approve the application for home off, home occupation, for express junk removal at 711 Main Street, handed. Given the information that was submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one's 195 Glendale Road, an A and R for the property of Catherine O. Lammerow, trustee. Dan, this yours?
Yes.
Looks like they're just combining.
They're doing two parcels, it's combining one.
Both of them were conforming lots to start with, and they are still conforming lots. So they're just gonna combine them into one. Um, any questions?
Jason, he asked me why.
Yeah, okay, so, not that it's material to the application, but why?
Why, why would you combine two lots?
Just for simplicity, I guess.
I, I ask because I have, I have, it's just two lots and I requested it. Yeah, keep them, keep them separate on purpose.
Planning in the future, it's one story.
Tea with that or solar? Yeah, I mean, I, we had two conforming lots going into one, let's see, I don't really have any questions.
Ever, I mean?
Nope, I have no questions.
That's okay, don't worry about it. Everybody knows me.
And we all sign or the chair sign?
He said he's gonna have everybody.
No, no, if you don't mind. Okay.
And he signs it.
The Mylar.
The Mylar.
Mylar, it's, I just.
No, all the copies, but I'm gonna, want to sign them the same way, what side of them the same way?
And usually the chair can just sign it, but tonight I'm asking everybody to sign it because we've got two work members. So they'll get, they'll get an understanding of why. I didn't put.
I'll bring them back to you after they sign.
Same with the other guy?
But that's.
This way, I forgot to put a chair on there.
Having a chest, Jeff, it's planned. Plans rolled so that I don't want it showing on the outside.
I'll unroll every roll.
So we got one more item for our regular meeting. I got one more. Twenty-five Potash Hill Lane. Site plan review, a home occupation for Deon L. Smith. Oh boy, how you doing? Okay. Um. If you don't mind. Okay. Deon, tell us what you. Yeah, hold on. Motion to approve, I'll entertain for the A and R.
So moved.
Seconded? All in favor? We all signed it.
Got it.
Um, sorry. Okay. Um. So it looks like it's just gonna be an office, you're not gonna treat at that location, or are you?
No, I'm not, it's just, just an office, it's still there.
Okay. Um. Okay, so you'll travel, it looks like you're pending the state approval for your solo therapist license.
Yes.
To travel, yeah. And you'll do it at, whether it's somebody else's house or at another establishment.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
No, it's like, no, no deliveries. No signs. Materials oughtn't to be stored inside the house. And it's basically the same as, same as the previous home lot, basically just a place to do invoice.
Everyone's done by you.
Everything's gonna be done by me.
Okay. So one invoice.
Yes.
And when you mentioned equipment, there will, it will be stored, what equipment are you talking about?
It's a massage table, massage chair, just regular supply. It's gonna be inside.
You'll store that inside the house?
Yes.
And then take it with you when you go to do the massage?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Move that we approve the home occupation for Deon Smith at 25 Potash, Potash Hill Lane. For approval of massage office for clerical work.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you're all set. Okay, I'm gonna close our regular meeting. Six thirty-three, and I'm going to open a public hearing for 2021 C, self-storage on Summers Road. Um, okay. So. I guess. We've got some new site plans, we've also. I'm gonna ask if the chief of police, I mean, chief of fire, fire department chief has reached out to you.
He reached out to me, reached out a set of plans, and last time, Rachel was in touch with him, right?
Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, your word.
So I sent the plans as a part of a request to review them and say we satisfied with the access.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Okay. I think last week, or the week before, whenever it was, we heard from your engineers. So. Are there any other questions? For attorney, bring on anything? Okay. Absolutely.
So, Mr. Pelvin, he probably answered these questions, but I'd like to hear them. What is the planned height for the fence? And that was something that we wanted to. So that's the current plan. And that's, and then the height of the buildings without the solar. Do we know exactly what?
And remember, there was the drop and the elevation that we went through. Basically, the view from the fence. From the streets.
So there's a two-foot drop over the entire?
I provided the numbers and went over that in detail.
And what, what were you going to use for de-icing magnesium chloride or something for?
It is a two feet.
So I'm not sure. Looking at the plan. They were content. It says L twelve and L thirteen. I did not see those different.
Are those things that were given to us?
Those.
And another meaning?
The, the plant, it was, it was provided, and that was with some of the tie-in bond. And then there was questions regarding from one of the neighbors about flow, about the two-foot drop. Yeah. Through all the measurements. And then on the one we provided to the fire chief, we gave the specific. Cause someone had a question about the specific distance between the alleys. We provided that as well. So there's been about four sets, everyone with more information to respond. And that's how we satisfied. You're outside expert or.
Yeah, I know we saw him. I know you showed him to us the last meeting, but I didn't.
They're not included with the plan set.
They're not included.
They were. They were separate.
Yeah, they were provided. One was provided. It was, I know I saw him.
No, they were provided and.
Yeah. I just wanted to look at them again.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Not your fault.
Cause that was under the same.
Nope. No, understood.
Yeah, I might be able to ask questions.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right. Well, first, I wanted to make sure I was looking at the right plans because I'm getting multiple hearings confused here.
I, I don't blame you. So to, to go to your question though, I think. So just so we're clear, at the initial meeting, I, I told the initial set of plans that were submitted with the application. The fence was going further up. This fence runs to the back portion of the house. Which I believe one of my, I can't remember what board member asked. It says it's connected to the house. Explain, no, it's a post in the ground. And the gate, which we expanded from sixteen to twenty-four feet, I believe it was, to accommodate a two-way traffic. The fence, we talked about would be black in color. The board was gonna, if, if you saw fit to pass this, you were gonna inform us whether or not you wanted slots in it. So it would be black in color to match the door that I showed you on the house. So that there's essentially no visual. Gate is open and shut. And then the last issue, we talked about, we talked a couple times about, about we, we don't want a dumpster in the plan. We include it for reference in case the board wanted. We prefer that if, or were to act and prove it, that the dumpster not be included as a requirement. We thought that would be beneficial to everyone. And then the, you asked for the second, the next plan, which we brought to the second meeting, which laid out for you where the. Two types of asphalt were, but one's at the exit. And. You asked for, once someone asked about the colors, we described the colors, that bronze is more like brownish, very neutral colors to blend in the background. We went through the lighting in depth and gave you the complete lighting plan, showing zero offside. And explain where the location of lighting was between the. The units that go down and are activated. There's no lighting inside of the units. You talked, you talked about the parking spaces, the tie-in bonds, and even that that was more than adequate, such a low-use impact as far as traffic flow. You know, I, I, I think that's generally what we talked about.
We talked about setbacks with your hearing, you know?
Yeah, we, we, you talked about the setbacks. We put those on there where the setback is from the. It's all on that plan. And that was how the question of the fence was. That was the first thing I addressed in my very first meeting. We talked about moving the fence back and then we would have, there's setbacks all around the whole property. One of the neighbors asked at a, one of the meetings about flow, and then the civil janitor had been talking about that, about how it flows in. It can't flow out and about how the forest pavement works and the way it drains through the non-publing. We covered a lot.
Right. What? On the, one of, one of my. One of my. Concerns with the last. With a similar proposal was the distance and vegetation between. Not your proposal, you didn't have this, but, but the other proposal had. Things other than the plantings and fence and setbacks. So on that one, I had asked for the setbacks to be an undisturbed. Twenty-five or fifty, in that case, it was fifty foot.
The only area where there, the. We gave you a complete landscape plan down to the, literally the foot. And it shows where, what we, what we placed there. There's not. Aside from the, the bushes along the, along the fence in front, which are for aesthetic purposes, and you, the board didn't want them, that's fine, but obviously they're benefit the site.
So what I'm looking at, the plan I'm looking at, fencing and the arborvitae, I'm assuming there are.
Yeah.
The fence and the arborvitae are within the setback, right on the property line.
That's something. Just, you're on about five, I'm sure.
L six.
L six.
L six.
Just.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
So I'm on sheet L six. And came up after I, it came up, basically the rationale being. This is a, a business district. Your portion is, you've only got a couple of butters on the residential side. But when it comes to residential butters, there's substantial concern with the proximity of buildings and pavements.
Sure.
And that sort of thing. So on the last one, I requested, on the other site, I requested that any. Residential budding lines have an undisturbed setback associated with them. So fifty feet of whatever's there now. Whatever vegetation's there now. And then.
Yeah, I don't, we don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't wanna commit to fifty, fifty feet because the plan, and, and I would have. Had him said, I don't have any fun, but the plan tells you the feet. And there's nothing along, there's only, there're only two, possibly two and a quarter residential people who are on the far side tonight. And I explained it was almost, I wanna say was that, I had the measurements for you last time. It's a very.
Fifty feet plus a hundred feet to their houses or somewhere.
Yeah, so. So that's. My, my thought process. We have this moved back.
If you move that back, you're changing, I mean. That's, that essentially changes the site. This is, the whole reason why we're doing all this is because there's tons of room after that. And this is where they have to give you all the aisle move, movement, everything that moves around.
My concern is hiding it from the residences.
But that is hiding it from the residents. That's why you have these, that's why we're putting all the arborvitae there. That's a big number. That's a long stretch to run that, which is, arborvitae goes higher than the fence.
No, no, I, I understand that, but looking at, I mean, looking at the definition of setback, it says that nothing is gonna be occurring in that area. So if you're gonna be having to go around here to maintain the fence or, or maintain the arborvitae, so you're gonna be having an activity going on. Right? I'm not so, I'm not so concerned with where it's business-to-business, or where it's business-to-residential. I personally am concerned with having. Fence and arborvitae right up. I, I feel if it gets pushed back to the, the fifty-foot setback.
You go to the other issues? Cause I wanna reach out potentially to the gentleman.
Yeah.
Initiative.
Yeah.
I just wanna ask him what the actual measurement is.
So I can tell you. So it's. Let me see, one inch is twenty feet, right? So I scaled that out. So. So here's like fifty feet later, okay, from here to the edge. It's fifty feet. So right there. So that's what he's saying. It's fifty feet from there to where you have the property line.
So what I'm looking for.
So what he, what happened?
What I'm looking for on the residential is that this fence follows the fifty-foot setback.
Oh, you want it here?
Yes.
Yes. To wipe out that stretch of the.
No, no, this is, this is business.
Oh, just here, you mean?
So basically, you're gonna follow the setback.
Yes. So in other words.
I, only here.
So yes, not here, which you're applying.
Only, only from here down. Yeah, I don't think that's a problem.
From here?
I, I understand. I didn't, I didn't understand. I understand.
We're looking for.
That would be, that way it's leaving vegetation.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's.
That's a fair conversation.
Respectfully, you also have a, they're probably easy radius. If they affect, at least right, because you're fifty foot. It's on the radius.
No. I don't, I don't, I don't think. Yeah. Just because of the way it's written. Because it's, it's from, it's from the line. Right? So. You're going, the property line is here. Property line is not. You know, I'm sorry. So.
Fifty foot setback from the property line.
From the side yard or from the backyard. The way, it's the way that they write setbacks. Trust me. I thought, I thought the same thing, but as I read it, that's how I interpreted it, is that fifty feet from, I mean, I could, we can look at it, but it's, it doesn't mention the corner.
And this would be an undisturbed vegetable setback. So it would not be grading up to the property line the way it's, that this is shown.
Yes. Yes. So that's. Mister, Mister. So, so that, just to be clear, that the fifty foot I'm looking to have be natural, right? So this, this. No, I just leave it how it is. That's what I'm thinking. Just leave whatever, whatever, exactly. Whatever, whatever's there now, but that's gonna impact this, this line right here.
Right. Yeah, you want it to come to here.
Yeah, so basically from here to here.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Cause right now, you've got these, these, you got two fifty-two, two fifty-one, two fifty. You guys are grading up to the property line. And so here, that's not gonna be.
Well, during, during construction, that might be something. Well, why would that matter during construction?
When you're grading, now you're gonna destroy the entire buffer.
No, 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 we're not. You're not. Well, I understand what you're saying, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna destroy anything right now. When I went, there's no, it's not, it's not grass, it's not trees, anything. That's just, just. Rough, like open kind of land at the end there. So all we're doing is, is, there has to be just an attractive metal. Put the fence in, you think, we gotta be on both sides for it.
No, no, but, but what I'm saying, right here, you're already grading. So follow this two fifty line, right here, you're, you're actually cutting.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, so don't move dirt in this area, is what I'm trying to say.
All right. So just leave the pitch the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, we weren't looking to lower it anyhow, because the higher it is, the better it is for us.
So right now, you've got, right now, you're cutting out a little bit. Right now, you're cutting a little bit.
I got it.
Fifty-one down to two fifty.
You're only talking about two feet over a fifty feet. That's fine.
Exactly.
That does, that doesn't.
But just, just so that machines aren't.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. I just meant, we're seeing we'll be on, we're not gonna move the earth.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
It's at two fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, it'll actually, so it'll be. Right. So now you're talking one foot over that distance.
Yeah.
Right? This is two fifty-two. This is two fifty-one. Yeah, so it's really, it's, it's small, this corner right here.
You understand?
Yeah, let somebody else.
Anybody else? Heather?
Do you have, the signs that you're going to use, do you have any information?
We, we, we haven't designed them yet. I mean, it's something we have to go through and get approved for a minute now. I mean, we'll make an aesthetically appropriate for the area and to be not like the, yeah, get station, a woman in one street away.
And also, is there any thought, and I may be way off base here, but is there any thought to. Your purchasing insurance to cover any damage done by hazardous waste? It could spill, which we don't know about because we're not checking.
We have, there'll be a general insurance policy to cover those type of, anything that, anything to the property. We wouldn't have a separate environmental. We do a lot of environmental, dirty sites and DDP sites. And even those, you don't get them for, even when you clean them, because, I mean. I just can't imagine, because you have, you have, even though it's porous, and I know this is kind of counterintuitive argument, you have that buffer. Anything that lands, it would have, for, for environmental, and I think one of your board members knows, for the environmental, it would take a long time. And it would have to be something extremely in large volumes that couldn't conceivably be, that I could see a scenario in those storage facilities. That would have to. Leach and leach over a long, long period of time to get a lower force into somehow. And it's almost inconceivable. You know, and you have, in your policy, most insurance policies have coverage for things of that nature. It wouldn't be something that we would be doing.
Do you have pollution liability with your normal?
They usually have, it's like something like, it's a small rider. It's not, I don't wanna confuse and say it's the one you're thinking of. Well, when you have a site you're worried about, someone leeching from you, you know, if you do a study and you're downgrading, you would buy a policy. It's not a policy that.
It's not, but it's a rider.
It's a former, exactly, normal commercial rider for this type of usage. It covers things like that because if someone puts something in there that, that spilled, it wouldn't, I can't see a scenario where it gets into our property. More importantly, gets off of our property. If there was something in my room, one of the, one of the storage facilities itself, the floor, something like that, or fall down, but it, I mean, spilled, but it can. It, it takes years for something like that, for most substances to leach. Any conceivable substance that I can think of. I mean, the ones you were talking about would be like, grade two fuel oil, maybe number nine. Even if they stored some, some canisters of things. It's not something that leaches. So I don't, I don't see an environment. I mean, I just can't, you know, a lot of that area of work, you just can't see how that could be something. But there is, there is insurance. It is on the property and outside people protected for it. We may not be covered for it, but any butter. Any butter in the town will be covered, because it leaches off.
That's my question. Alright, so you would have insurance?
Facility with people coming out here with millions of dollars invested, uh, you know, banks would acquire it.
Um, and, and another question, um, as to viability of this business, and I don't know very much about storage unit business. But the, have you done any studies or collected any data? That shows you that this business that you proposed to put here is going to be financially viable, given all the other storage units in this area of Massachusetts?
Let me put it this way, banks won't finance this for us unless they. Check me out, cause one of the things they do is they don't finance the structure, they look at your pro forma, to see that it, it can perform in the area based upon the studies. And then they have an appraiser comes in and tells them about this specific use, the value of this business in relation to the property. In order to do that, we're satisfying a bank to give us millions and millions of dollars, that's how confident I would say they are, I think that's the ultimate witness test. Whether you wanna believe our business judgment or not, um, I mean, I, I, so I think that would. Get a B resolve if I were in your shoes to say, okay, we have a bulk, not only an individual lender, but we have a whole board that goes before the, commercial board for approval from the bank. In order to finance it, to spend the type of money we're talking about.
So you have relied on the bank's investment?
No, no, we do our own, we have to submit it to the, we give a whole pro forma to the bank, we, we go through a cost analysis, we go through a staging up, uh, there's a, there's a, um. A, uh, a period of time in which you stage up, it actually take, there's some variances on how long it can take, six months to eighteen months, enormous, uh, suit up to get to a saturation level, if you're high enough and your numbers are meeting, we build all that into our pro forma. So.
And, and did, did the bank review this, and did you submit all of this, given that both you and Attorney Barbie are trying to put.
We're just talking about one. We're gonna talk about one. I don't wanna get confused with Mister Garby.
But that, that is relevant to her question.
It has to go with that, that's what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Now, I'm, I'm saying that.
No, I understood your comment very well. I, my, just a simple reality is a couple, number one, um, there is a, and I talked about this in a couple of minutes. You can go to any source that references storage in this area, and specifically, there's a, a real desire, need, it's a growing market and, uh, necessary. We've done our research, we feel very comfortable, we're investing personal dollars, millions of dollars into this, so I, I can't speak much more than that to say that. You know, we're putting our money where our mouth is, and we feel confident, confident. Now, can I give you an absolute guarantee this business is gonna be a roaring success? No, if I did it, I mean, you know, no, nobody knows I'm defending the business. Uh, but we've done all of our due diligence, we've getting conventional financing, this is in second market financing and anything like that, this is conventional financing, which requires you go through a very involved process. So there's almost, you know, you. That's one component of it, uh, which I would suggest is not, you know, I, I understand why you're asking. The long and short of it, we believe this is an appropriate site for this use, in fact, it's a really good site for this use, in light of the city's need for low impact use. In light of the no water on the empty area, and in light of our preservation of historic buildings, so we're saying we're covering all those, uh, we think it's a win-win. Pun intended there, uh, but we do, along with the fact that we think it's economically viable, with or without competition nearby.
With or without.
With or without.
Mister Chairman. I'm sure you guys, Mister Pellegrino, I'm, I'm sure you guys don't wanna share pro formas, but would it be abnormal for the bank to write a letter? Stating that they've reviewed.
Yeah, that would be, that would, I, I've done a permit for almost thirty years, never have. Or get into a pro forma, and I would.
No, no, not a pro forma.
Well, even a letter, I would suggest, that's not, the, the. Your, your, the viability of my finances or our collective finances on the company, I suggest was outside the bank's body, the body should review. The appropriateness of the use. The, the, uh, location, and all of those factors.
Well, we also have.
Finding, once you delve into finances, it's a rabbit hole, now you're talking about, now you start to get into things at which are far, because it's not a decision based upon. The financial strength of the entity doing it, it's based upon a number of other factors that we all talk about, I mean, I.
So, so the, where I'm going with it, the reason I'm asking is because part of the, uh, purpose of the special permit is to promote an attractive and viable commercial and industrial district. So that's, that's where my train of thought is going is.
Right, and, and my, and, and that's why you're, you're, you have, uh. Forty thousand dollars in plans you're gonna go through, and, and you're, you're saying, okay, we wanna have this fence, it's gonna be six feet with this, these slots. You're gonna maintain, you're saying you're gonna keep this house, it's gonna have a black door, you're saying you're gonna put these, this, uh, type of concrete in, which is millions of dollars, you're gonna do setback this way. You do fencing, and then do arborvitus and all those things, I mean, if, if it's a simple rea, if it's a simple matter of financial ability. Then I can, I can give a letter to the bank saying I can myself personally fund this, and I don't need financing, that's, you know, we don't, why would we get into that? That's a rabbit hole, and it's not, I don't feel it's appropriate standard review, all the other things are, you wanna make sure, the fact that we don't have the financing, we can't do those things, we can't build, because. We pull a C L and a person, and they don't approve it, and ultimately it comes back before me, and, and the permit gets pulled, I mean, so that's your control, it's not finding, because if you start getting into that. Then you should have asked the gentleman there, show us your finances, that you can run this massage center, and you should ask the lady for the parking, show us your numbers at your off, at your restaurant, that you have financial feasibility from your bank. Or yourself personally, your personal balance sheets.
Well, they're not, they weren't here for a special permit.
No, no, but, but it's, but you understand the analogy I'm trying to say.
I get it.
All I'm trying to say is I think that, I, I, well, I respect and I understand the question, it, you know, your question is, if, and I don't wanna put version, as I understand you saying, like. But if you think this is viable, if there could be other competition nearby, I've answered unequivocally, we're here, we're comfortable moving forward. These are the plans, we spent a lot of money to be here, through multiple meetings, to do all these plans at a very high level, these, Berkshire Design is one of the, the premier design groups in Western Mass. Uh, we think this put together a very good proposal, so, yeah, we're very confident, I mean, we're, we're, we're not gonna get into a business with, with millions and millions of dollars. Uh, and, and best our personal funds unless we feel confident, but I'm gonna hedge it again, I don't have, first of all, I can't tell you it's gonna. The future of this, uh, industry any more than anybody else, any more than we could in any other industry, just like when, uh, we were permitting, um, cannabis in Springfield. We can't talk about the future of that industry, we can say that this is the plan we're gonna do, we're, we have to adhere this plan, if we don't do the plan, then you have right to pull a permit. I mean, I, I, I just.
Follow up on, uh, if I could, if we could, if I could move off of that, follow up question I had is. Could you, for the board's certification, I'm assuming you evaluated other options, other use options that, prior to getting to this one? Would you be willing to share what other uses you evaluated, I'm assuming they were not feasible for various reasons, would you be willing to share that or no?
Alright, again, we're no, again, we're going down a slippery slope, but I will, and I, and I think.
I, I only think it's important so that everybody knows.
I understand that, but I wanna be frank, and I think it's inappropriate question for this reviewing body, but I'm gonna answer it, noting my objection. So, we did wanna do assisted living, including with this seminole property next door, we actually had an agreement, had that property under it, we cannot do it because of the water, low water effect use. We have looked at other high traffic uses for the site, we didn't think we're appropriately taking down the house, and taking down the trees. I had select people reach out to me, I've had historic people and I've had neighbors, I've, we're signing every call over the last two years since we bought this property. I, I've listened to their concerns, we tried to find the low impact, and by the way, this was our use before any other potential use was thought about from other properties, in fact. That was under a contract with us, and, and, and we decided not to acquire the rest of the property for a whole variety of reasons, because. We thought this use dovetail hidden back there between a use on the corner, although I took a drive-by before today. And I looked at the septic system with a banded tractor trailer, four plows sitting there, overgrown brush, uh, uh, all kinds of equipment hanging out there. Right on the main, on the main street, on the Long Meadows Side Street, and then I walked across the street, I see all the traffic truck, all the, uh. Trash trucks lined up right on the roadway and all those things, we said, how do we find a use that, that is, that works for the town? That is commercially viable, because you have to have something that's viable, so, uh, what we thought was, rather than put in a high impact use in there. Uh, that this was a low impact, didn't need the water, which killed three of our uses, with two other uses we tried after the assisted living. And we went and spent some money on that one.
And, and I think this needs to be, I think people need to know.
That's why I'm trying to explain to you, we went a great length, because you can't, you can't put your own wells and drill them to the level we need there, and you need a certain number of units. In order to make it bi, economically viable, and that's why we had the property next door, seminole property under, under agreement, to do that, to expand all of them. There's a holdout on the corner, the greenhouse at some point will be probably a gas station or something of that magnitude, uh, something more commercially, much more commercially. Because it's, that lends itself, that corner piece, that's not part of our piece, it's not the part we add on the patrol, we had the back portion, we had this part, because we were find, trying to find a use. So we end up with this building, and we're still, that's why I'm, I, I'm perplexed, because I'm saying, wait a minute. We're going out of our way to retain, uh, uh, a, a building that we cannot have, we're going out of our way to retain the trees, we're going out of our way to find a very low impact traffic. Services, there, we don't call upon school systems, we don't call upon trash, we don't call upon, uh, high, high services. That fits within the, within a mixed use area, and that's exactly what it is, when you, and again, I, I, I just went through there to see it, I mean, there's. Giant puddling on the abundant property, going with everything abandoned, and tractor trailers and, and overgrowth and track, trash trucks across the street. So I've listened to the opposition, I've listened to everybody paint how, uh, there's this, you know, great business, which I think is a great business, but it's also a thirty-something, I think it's thirty-five feet high. Staring over at neighbors' properties, so that's a much different use, and maybe a wonderful business, but there's, there are neighbors who don't want a thirty-foot structure. Which we could ultimately put a higher structure here, that towers over people, they look every morning when they wake up, they look out at it, I mean. I, I, I think that we've gone, I can't imagine a less impact use on this site for commercial development.
Yeah.
This use.
My question, basically, my question.
And I get.
I appreciate you answering.
Because I think we went, we've gone through a lot and tried really hard for almost two years, rather than rush into a development and do it, we could at least, we had so many people wanting to come and lease it. For all kinds of uses, which are matches, including car sales and things of that nature, and, 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 and we've said no.
No, and I appreciate you answering it, I know, I just wanted to have that.
Yep.
Know what you went through already, and what you were unable to do.
Anybody else?
So I know that hours of operation are six AM to ten PM, correct?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
And is it, uh, and I can't remember if I accessed it before, but are they able to access them twenty-four seven, or just between the hours of six?
Between those hours, unless it was a merchant or something, not, not for normal customer.
Okay, and, um, what time will be staffed?
We, we talked about this last time, is that kiosk, that system, that new security system, some will be there generally within the week, but it's a call, so, so it signals them. They can come back and forth, they're not gonna sit there all day, you know, the, the whole time, there's not a need for that, they'll be there.
Understood, thank you. That's, that's it.
And, like, um, you are going to have a video? And is that twenty-four seven?
Twenty-four seven.
Okay, and that's gonna be motion sensitive video?
No, the video runs, the, the, the lighting is motion sensitive.
Okay, but the video will run regardless? And do you have a plan for when that video is gonna be reviewed, if at all, and it's gonna be taped over, if at all?
There's, there's, yeah, we, we have, we haven't finalized the plan, but generally, what we do, that is, you maintain it for a short period of time, and then it goes, it goes over, and it's viewed periodically. Sometimes, and someone's not looking at the video twenty-four seven, but you're looking at, you're like, it goes, it, it goes down to multiple people's phones, you pull them right up. And you look right on the phone, you can see every, every single camera view, that's how the tech, tech talent is actually pretty cool.
But you don't have a plan for how often it will be reviewed?
Yeah, the, the employee will be reviewing it during the weekend, on the weekends, um, but we don't have a proto, we have not gotten to that detail, I don't wanna say a protocol to review it every three hours, or something like that.
Would, would you at least be able to say that it would be reviewed by somebody, uh, before it's taped over?
Oh, yes, yes.
And if there was motion detected during hours in which there shouldn't have been motion detected?
Generally, you're gonna find out there's a problem within the time period before it's erased, and it's highly, um, unusual. Unless you get into. One of the more highly profiled cases. That's, that's the unusual.
Well, with your cameras, you have like, if, I think what you're trying to ask, if there is motion, do you have like an alert? So if there's, if, for some reason, the camera picks something up at two in the morning, does somebody get an alert?
Yeah, so the camera system is, it's, they, they call it a cartel system, so what it is, is basically after hours when the picture's up, we can set it to whatever we want, it'll send a screenshot. If it senses that the body, if it's a dog, it won't send it if it's a person, so I mean, we can control that, through the software, whoever we want. So we haven't established a, we didn't do the perimeter yet, but that's what the system will be, right, and selfie after ten, I, you have a body that goes on here. I'll take a shot, send it to my phone, and I can see if someone's on site, and then we can basically control lighting, send someone over there, whatever, so there will be some security privileges in that software.
So, and then I, we're sorry, the fence all the way around the back is at the same as the fence that's on the road?
Same, same fence, if you want it meshed, we can, uh, slot it, we can slot it.
And then the existing house, that's just all access?
All offices, yeah, commercial use.
The, the existing house, um, are you going to be committed to maintaining that house?
We have no plan, I mean, we're making it our office and part of the project, so.
Right, but it's, but it's a very old house, right, I don't know how old it is, does anyone know how old it is?
I think Rayford Davis, uh, in his initial.
Yeah, right, so I'm, I'm sure there would be some maintenance that would be needed.
I'm just like, any, just like the rest of the property, it's our business, I mean, we want people to come, so, I mean, uh, that's our goal, is to, to maintain it and make it aesthetically pleasing sight.
Um, and, and the maintenance of the, um, permeable asphalt, the vacuuming of it, and inspection of it, et cetera. Would you be in any way willing to do a yearly report to the town of the maintenance that you do on the property?
Then I guess. It's a condition you all put on there, that. We, we, I provide it on the end, because you'll, you'll ask for that.
Right.
I mean, remember too, we have a real goal to maintain that in the way we explained, because it provides longevity for. That's our goal, is to maintain a clean site, because the more maintained, the less maintenance there are.
Right, but I, I think to the, to the townspeople, the permeable, permeable asphalt is a really important part of this.
Yeah, yeah, well, I think, honestly, I, I would, if I was a resident in my town, I would endorse it and jump on it, because it's the tide, I believe it's the really future, so does D P. And I think, and I think that's a really good thing, so I have no problem reporting back, and I mean, if it's part of a collaboration, fine, we do, in many towns, we do. Uh, programs for the schools, for our solar projects, way before it was ever fashionable, we developed curriculum and went in and did that as part of our projects. So I'm, I see this similar, if this town's interested in that, for sure. I have no problem talking about that and, and, and taking a look at it as it goes on, I mean, look, this is what we expect, we expect it to be, work great, and if it doesn't, we have to take remedial actions, that's simple.
Is, and it's, pardon me if this is already been explained, but the other tree that was noted in the historical permissions letter. I'm not gonna try and pronounce it, because I'm embarrassed.
Yeah, I can't say it either, so don't worry.
Yeah, on the east side, is that remaining?
That is, that, no, and that is not a significant tree, we consulted the, uh, the same landscape of that US forestry, um, Dr. Bonias from, uh, New Mass, Amherst, Harvard. And it is a, because I figured someone's gonna ask about that, it is a normally associated with a fruit tree, grows like a vine out of fence, and it goes sideways, if you Google it, you'll see. It doesn't look, it, it's, it's a very odd thing, there is not, it may be unusual here, but it's, it, but it's not a normal species here, and that's why. So, so there's no significance to it, like the size and circumference of perhaps an over, or a beech tree. Like the size and circumference of perhaps an over, over a beech tree. Um, and, and that is not something we're gonna, that may be someone's personal, you know, they like it, but from a, from a, uh, a forestry or horticultural point of view, that's no uh significance in this area. It's not something that we wanna make a pledge with, protect or keep.
Right, thank you.
I've got, I've got a few. Don't jump across the table much.
Be too far. You're bigger than me too.
So, I, I mean, I, I've given this a lot of thought and um there are some things that I would be pushing for in a special permit. We already talked about the setbacks. And just so you know where I'm coming from, my perspective is if, if if I'm a homeowner that abuts this property and I go to sell my house in three or four years. I don't want someone to come to look at my house to know what's on the other side of the woods. So, um, the roof lines were gonna be, how high on this?
Eight feet.
Eight foot, okay. So, I'm just checking that because in my head.
And it, and ju- it may be eight three, eight in that vicinity, but you had the, I gave you the exact one before, it was ten, six.
Yeah, and you brought it out.
Two off, so, under nine feet was what it was.
My thought is that when these arborvitus go in in front of a fence, I'm, I'm gonna want a solid fence where there's residences. Um, because.
This, that, with the slats, so it's solids.
I, I think I, honestly, I want something that's gonna match, you're talking a chain link fence with the slats through it?
Well, with the, with the black, so it ties in with the star nature of the front.
Yeah, I would, I would be looking for some sort of solid paneling fence.
Yeah, no, but I, I, I hear you. So, I, I think that's an, and I respect what you're saying. I don't, I don't think that that makes an aesthetic difference between arborvitus wall and there. I, I, I would prefer not to do it. I think if you want it in the area with a residential list and have it only in that area. You know, I understand what you're asking, I just don't see it, because it.
My concern is that the arborvitus aren't gonna be, I'm gonna interrupt a little bit, if you don't mind. And for me, it's a nonstarter, okay? No chain link on that area, okay? I'm gonna have, anywhere where you can see and, I know you said the black with the, you know, uh-uh, not going for a chain link. Okay, looks industrial, not gonna happen with me. I'm telling you right up, right, straight.
Well, look at, I, I can't control, I mean.
I know, I'm telling you, yeah.
I'm not arguing with you, this time giving my opinion.
Yeah, that's okay, and I'm, I'm telling you what I'm looking for. Good, oh, you want me to keep going?
Yeah.
No problem, alright. Um, so I'm looking for a solid vinyl fence. I don't know if it's wider, but some sort of solid panel fence, I'm sure we, the board will discuss. Personally, I don't want any more than two feet from the top of the fence to the top of the roof line. Uh, and I expect that the arborvitus will be planted at four foot spacing and they'll be ma- maintained. When they're at full growth in three to four years, they'll be maintained above the roof line. So, if you got an eight foot roof line, maybe a nine foot, ten, ten foot arborvitus wall. I'd also be looking for, you did provide an O N M plan for stormwater. Uh, stormwater management during construction, oh, I didn't look at the back.
Yeah.
Um, operating, it's street, street sweeping, porous pavement, um, the other, uh let's see, snow and ice removal.
Minimum salt is.
Okay, and then the other thing that I would be looking for is something in the O N M plan for fall and spring. Uh pruning or cleanup of the arborvitus area, so that we don't have.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, we would do that anyhow, but that's fine.
Right, but I, but I wanna have it in writing and then whenever you guys submit.
As a condition, just say that, that we maintain uh fall and spring cleanup of arborvitus?
Right, what I was thinking is when you're, so if you're submitting an annual report for your porous pavement. We did our pruning on such and such a day in the spring, we did our pruning on such and such a day in the fall.
That's fine.
Um, the other thing that I brought up, um for another project that abuts, uh, there's some, there's some major concerns, whether it's valid or not. That there's gonna be contamination coming off the site, going into, you know, the, the uh subsurface and impacting the groundwater in the area, and there's some shallow wells in the area. What I think needs to get done is I think there needs to be a baseline established of abutting uh private wells. So, if an abutting uh property owner has a private well. Um, that the applicant or the, the project applicant, project developer would pay for sampling that well before construction starts. So that we have a baseline of groundwater conditions.
But that's, number, two, two things. Number one, that's a, it's a, it's, I don't believe the test is worth doing. And two, the cost shouldn't be put on, on us, and I'm not even fighting about the cost, but we're downgrading. But we, uh, uh, we can't.
You're visibly downgrading, I don't know which way the groundwater flows.
But, but if the well, if the wells and their contaminant, it doesn't mean it came from us afterwards anymore. So we can establish a baseline, but it doesn't mean that it comes from our site, because if you were, if there were a problem with the wells. You'd come and test and you'd know the leaching where it's coming from, and that's easy to determine. That would, that, so you wouldn't do it ahead of time, because, I, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think you know, that's not how you would do it. You wouldn't go take a baseline for them now, because let's say in two years, the baseline's different. It doesn't mean it didn't come from the street, it doesn't mean it could, they'll come from another location.
Right.
We still have this, we, we, we would still go do what you would do normally, because you'd go back, I'm a neighbor. Let's say hypothetically, my, my well, my well reads differently in two years, right? So then you, you, someone comes and does a testing and they say, okay, nothing's coming off this property with the storages. So it must be coming from the source. You don't go to the well, you go to our property.
Right, but if you establish a baseline there, you know what the quality is, if so you don't have, you don't have a baseline, you don't have a baseline, five years from now, somebody says it came.
I just got off the phone today with the, the Water and Sewer Commission for Springfield, okay? So, they had to do a two-year reporting for the water quality because of the, because of the hurricane in two thousand eighteen, they just got off it. We had such a high uh rain level this summer, they got back on it, but they now have to do two years of reporting, you know why? Because when you get that high of a level, the, the um contaminants go in, went into the reservoirs, similar. We have this high of a level, it has nothing to do with what we do on our site, it's not the, it's not the porous pain, but pavement working or not working.
But you're not following my, my, I'm talking repra, repra contamination. The concern here is that you're gonna have, you're gonna have uh, you know, gasoline or oil coming off, and no one's gonna be protected by that. You're, that's gonna be uninfluenced by seasonal rain. You're not gonna have.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I respectfully don't think that's how we get there, but if you want a testing of the two residential neighbors' wells, then we'll do that.
And then that way, there's a.
Uh, uh, yeah, uh, okay. I don't think you're gonna get oil in there, even if it, you've, the grade two fuel, it'll takes, it would take so many years to get there, but I'm fine.
It's a short amount of money.
Okay, I, I understand.
Short amount of money to.
I understand what you're asking, and, and that's fine, assuming they give us permission.
Assuming they give you permission, if they don't give you permission, then we have to document that they did give you permission.
Two abutting houses, so you want uh, uh, the well, the water quality of the well determined.
Basically, potability and then repra, regulated contaminants, so that nobody's later on down the line, nobody's saying that, that, you know, chlorinated solvents came off of your site and contaminated.
I got it, okay.
Someone stored paint thinners and, you know, they, they dumped fifty five gallons, you know what I mean?
Maybe this will give us added injections, so I'm fine.
Uh, and then uh, O N M, or anyways, fence setbacks. Yeah, and then the baseline sample, and then that's uh, really covered. What other uses? Yes, that's all I got.
So, so based on what you're saying, Jason, then the, the fence will be taller than sixty?
I'm gonna say that.
You're gonna say that, so right ahead.
You want the fence tall?
Yeah, I wanted eight feet, okay, and I wanted eight feet um in the front. Okay, and around with the, um where we talked about these setbacks.
I'm happy to do that, but I, I would just timeout.
Yeah, yeah. Please, okay? Um, I'm gonna say I'm not for the arborvitus, but we can discuss that. And the reason is, is the chain, the chain link fence looks too industrial. I want something that is pleasing to the eye, okay, including the gate coming across there.
Yeah, obviously.
Okay, um, so that's, that's my big thing.
I, I, and, and I understand that, that's, that's not unreasonable.
I'm gonna try and keep going. Another thing, move the septic. Not gonna approve the plan with a septic on somebody else's property.
Why? They think it's an easement, why, that's not.
No, 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 nope, no, I'm not going for that, sorry. Figure it out. It's not gonna be an easement, I'm not going for that. Okay, you're gonna have everything contained on your own property. Easement, whatever, not gonna happen with me. Um, I'm in agreement with you to remove the dumpster. I want um some type of line drawing, whatever for your uh heights of the storage units, you say they're eight feet, just a front, side, rear view of the um storage units, okay? Um, so I have it in record that it's eight feet, whatever.
I said under nine, it's eight three, but.
Whatever, yeah, I'm on it, I'm on it and.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to submit that for, so we can send that in, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, um, so that's where I'm at, moving the septic. Um, you've got to start on the post uh construction O N M, I'm gonna look for something in that O N M plan after you're done. The mowing, you're gonna mow it how many times, you know, um, the arborvitus, I'd like the arborvitus moved back in the front, at least, if you're gonna have arborvitus in the front, I'd like them moved back a little closer to the fence, alright? Not uh as they are, they're about twenty feet off of the, off of the road, I'd like them back a little bit further.
But, back further, what do you mean?
Away from the road.
Yeah, close to the fence, we have no problem putting it very close to the fence.
Yeah.
But can I just ask one question that I'm not?
I'm not sure, go ahead.
I understand if you want eight foot, that eight and six doesn't really matter to me. I just think for me, and you can Google it, I've won at least six historic awards from Historic Preservation Trust in doing it. I would never put eight feet. I, I think it, it's out of character with neighborhood, with fitting it, I'm happy to do it if that, and that's what you want. Um, but I don't think aesthetically it benefits the abutters, but if that's what you want, and we can do that. I just, that just, I just wanna voc- vocalize it because I really do think it would have been better the other way, but that's, I, I understand, I'll do whatever the board wants.
And the rest of the, listen, I'm, I'm, give me your mind. So again, we're gonna have all opinions.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm saying I'm okay with it, I, I don't want to get, I'm not like, uh, arguing that point, I'm okay with it. I'm just telling you aesthetically why, why we thought six was more appropriate. And, and, and why the arborvitus. If you wanna have just a fence at eight feet with no arborvitus, we're all for it. We don't think it'll look as good, it'll save us a lot of money, but we're all for it.
I don't.
And, and you do understand what this.
And we're gonna.
If you do the opaque fence, we have to move the arborvitus away from it, because they won't work. And okay, you know, the, even if you have a slot, it's different than opaque, so that's, I mean, we'll do, it's not gonna be ten feet, but you know.
Right. Alright. Is there anything else from the board? Okay, counselor? Now, let me just explain something, counselor, okay? There's nothing in the law that says I have to give you equal time, okay? There's nothing there. Okay, but I'm going to let you speak, okay?
Thank you.
There's nothing in the law, like last, last time, the last meeting, okay?
For the record, we did not take anywhere near the amount of time it's given everybody else. So I understand, I understand your point, but I also.
It's not debatable. Go ahead, speak, please. You may not like me, and I don't really care anymore, so let's go. Go ahead, I'm, I'm gonna treat everybody the same, I'm sorry.
Really not?
Yeah, here we go, go ahead, go ahead, counselor.
Alright, um, first of all, to touch on the point that was mentioned earlier about the developab- the developability of this lot. Uh, the fact that the property went and was converted from residential and rural residential and actually a farm to a business district doesn't mean that it's necessarily development. Right, so the idea that they're somehow, because it's now a business, it's now zoned as business, doesn't mean that it has to be developed. So I just wanna make sure that we're, that we're clear on that. To touch on uh these points um earlier. I think the idea that there's going to be, that they're going to be able to get insurance that's going to cover and adequately cover the neighbors for any sort of spill or hazardous materials that may be brought on site. Notwithstanding the fact that their goal is to not have anything like that on site, I think is, is not really reasonable. And I think it does raise a valid concern, that has been raised about potential damage to the aquifer and damage to the water in that area, and that is, as I've mentioned before, a very, very valid uh concern and, and a valid basis for voting to deny the project on its own. Um, I also think that valid uh viability is a valid concern, as is the future of the project. Because as has been touched on before, if for some reason that business doesn't end up being viable and there does end up being issues in the long term, then you're gonna have problems that we've talked about before with buildings and everything else. With respect to, uh I don't wanna cover all of the things that I've necessarily mentioned before, even though there, these are independent projects. That I will cover some of these things that I haven't covered yet in this hearing, because I've covered them in the other one. And it's just something that needs to be done for record purposes. Um, so I would like to incorporate by reference any of the comments that I have made, the board has heard in the other proceeding, but I will try to cover them briefly here, just so that we're covering them fairly between two, between the two different uh projects. First off, I think it's really important that the board understand that the, the whole purpose for the public meeting context is so that any opposition and any concerns raised by anybody are fairly considered. And the only way the board can really make a fully reasoned decision is by really listening and by hearing all of the objections and all of the concerns and all the points made on both sides. And so, that's an absolutely critical basis for the whole process here. These people are all here because your decision is going to impact their lives. Just as it's impacting the developers' lives, and it's really important for everybody to understand that all of their concerns are just as valid as the developer's interest in developing. And the whole purpose for the planning board is to make decisions about the viability of projects and to ensure that no developer profits on the backs of the neighborhood or of the town. And that's where our primary concern is here, right? Not necessarily in all the technical details that the board has validly spent an awful lot of time considering.
Sure, the purpose of the planning board is to ensure that nobody profits. Can you please elaborate on that? Nobody profits on the back.
That nobody profits on the backs, in other words, at the disadvantage of either the neighboring properties or of the town itself. So if you look at the purpose of the bylaw, one of the purposes of the bylaw.
We can go on to next.
Exactly.
Okay, I've just.
No, no, that's fine.
Misunderstanding.
That's fine, not at all.
Okay.
Um, and so, I think that's, that's where our primary concern is here. Is that at the end of the day, notwithstanding whatever technical adjustments or concessions, and however they may be turned. Whatever adjustments may be made to the technical side of the project, you can't change the core of the project, which is plunking down hundreds of storage units in, at, in one of the most visible places in town, right at the center of the crossroads, that everybody sees in their comings and goings, as well as in the backyards of well over twenty residents right in that same area. This is a high traffic area, it's very, very visible, and that's why the purpose of the bylaw specifically provides for the protection of the rural character of the town. And by putting such a project, let alone two of them, and I understand that they are independent, and I'm continuing to, to emphasize that point. But at the same time, collectively and individually, they have a major impact, impact on not just the character and the rural character of the town, and the fact that you have so many people here against this project illustrates for you, along with the signed petition and all of the other materials that you've seen, that we've offered to you. Really emphasizes the fact that everybody is in consensus, aside from the developers. And the board is entitled to make their own independent decisions, each of you independently. And the board is entitled to make their own independent decisions, each of you independently. But at the end of the day, there is complete consensus that this project, right here in the most visible portion of town, will significantly detract, if not destroy, the rural character of the town of Hamden. And that same concern also is reflected in decreased property values. And that's something that's, again, specifically provided to be protected by the board in the purpose stated in the bylaw. And I've already read you the language. It's in your materials. I don't need to go through that again. With respect to the permeable versus impermeable asphalt, I think it's, I think it's very interesting for the board to note that you have two independent projects that are right next to each other, and each of their experts is saying one, that permeable asphalt is the way to go and the only way to go, and the other saying that impermeable asphalt is the way to go and the only way to go. And at the end of the day, what that illustrates is there really is no right answer here. And frankly, there is no good answer here, because the both of these projects are just too big, and they're too likely to have an impact on the aquifer. And that's a concern that, as I pointed out in the ACW case, is a valid, perfectly valid reason for denying this project completely independently, as is the impact to the character of the neighborhood. Again, I've cited you cases on that before, as is diminution in property values. And again, we've provided a lot of evidence.
So the ACW cases, that was against mobile, right?
I can, I can check. But that, that was a case where there was a, there was a gas station.
Right.
That was proposed with twenty-four hours, and they talked about both the impact to the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, as well as concerns about the aquifer and.
From the gas station.
From the gas station, correct. But we are dealing with similar scenario here with potential for hazardous materials being brought in, because there's not somebody there controlling that at every single time. Right? I mean, they're not going through and inspecting what people are bringing in. Right? I mean, they have a contract, but we all know that contracts don't necessarily mean that something's not gonna happen, right? And again, you're in a water protection overly district, and it's, it's on an aquifer. Right? I mean, this is, this is on the aquifer that runs onto the ground that goes to the Scantic River, as well as it goes and affects the other people's wells around it. And so there are valid concerns here about water. And that is a basis completely on its own for deciding to deny it. And again, that decision is for each of you to make completely independently. You each may have your own decisions for making your own vote on this, and you're entitled to talk about those, you're entitled to not talk about those. But at the end of the day, finding one way or the other, there should be decisions and there should be reasoning and justification for each of your independent votes on this. The other thing I wanna point out is as much as we're being vilified for bringing these cases to your attention and suggesting that we're trying to contribute, well, in the last meeting, we were vilified for suggesting that we were encouraging litigation. The purpose of ours, bringing those cases to you, is only to illustrate for you, simply because it's the clearest and cleanest way to try to understand what these terms mean, right? Understand what the term "character" of the neighborhood means and how that gets considered. That's the purpose of bringing these cases to you. The same is true with respect to diminution in value, right, and damage to surrounding property values. And the reason we're bringing those cases out is to talk to you and to help you understand that those are each individual grounds that would fully support for denial in this case. And I would suggest to you that in this case, those are the primary reasons, independent of all of the other lipstick that from our perspective gets put on this pig. At the end of the day, the project is still the project, and it has these core problems, these core issues with it that, from our perspective, are clearly precluded by the town's bylaws. And they're just too big. They're too big. There's too much of an impact, not only on all of the individual surrounding abutting property owners, but also on the town itself. Give me one second here. I think the one last thing, one last point that I wanna make before I just double-check my client to make sure I haven't forgotten something, is I think the voice that speaks the loudest here, right, it's not mine, it's not the developers. It's the people's voice, right? You've got a lot of people, including five hundred-plus signatories on a petition opposing this. It's really important to listen to. But then listen to what you're not hearing, right? Typically, in these types of scenarios, in contentious scenarios before towns, you've got, you've got townspeople on both sides of the issue. What's the most important thing that you're not hearing here? You're not hearing people jumping up and down. There may be one or two people here or there, but you're hearing a ground swell of people opposed to this. You're not hearing the same type of ground swell that you would normally expect if there was a contentious issue in town from both sides. Right? The loudest voice in the room is what's not being said. And that's townspeople jumping up and saying, I support this project. Now, somebody may jump up and say that tonight, but at the end of the day, we've been through six or seven meetings on multiple similar projects, and you're not hearing that. So listen to the fact that you're not hearing that. That's one of the most important things that you can do here. Right? The consensus and the people are here because they're opposed to this project, not just because it's a project, but because it's, it's this project here, not because they're anti-business, but because a self-storage unit project here, let alone two, is not right for the town, it's not right for this location. And for that reason, I would ask you each to make your own independent decision, and please deny this project.
Well, definitely.
Thank you.
I understand where you're going with citizens being opposed to it and hearing citizens being opposed to it. My concern is that that's not a reason we can deny a special permit. That, that's, there's, there's four rea, there's, it's, it's not a reason we can deny, we can't deny a special permit simply because citizens show up opposed to it. And you know that's true just as well as.
You're, you're absolutely right. And so that's why, that's why I'm focusing you on the fact that they're here, not just because they're opposed to it.
Right.
Right? And if I need to take a poll, I can certainly take a poll to provide you the evidence that people are here.
You don't need to. But what I'm, what I'm trying to point out to the rest of the folks that may not know this is that's not a reason we can use to deny the special permit. That would be illegal for us to do that.
Exactly.
We have to, we have to focus on the, the, the criteria we have under the special permit process.
Understood. And, and the reason I was, the reason I'm focusing on the character and the, and the damage to the property values is because that's why the people are here.
Yep.
And so I can certainly ask and provide you the evidence and ask people, if you could raise your hands, if you're here because you think this does not meet with the character of the town, please raise your hands. If you're here because, if you put them down, if you're here because you are concerned that this project would damage your property values, please raise your hands. Okay, and so that's, that's the evidence. They're here because they're concerned about that, and that's what they want you to consider, not because they just don't like the project.
And the part that you feel is not in, the part that you feel that does not protect the rural character, aesthetic qualities, natural, environmental, historical features, and property values of neighboring properties.
As well as the town.
In the town, is the use or the way the project looks?
Both. It's, it's, it's.
So no matter what the project looks like, it doesn't.
A storage place, yes, be, because it's being used as a storage facility, which does not match with the character or the aesthetic or the architectural aesthetic.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, so if this, if this storage unit looked exactly like a New England farmhouse, it would still not meet the character of the town because it's a storage unit? He's one of the lifetime answers.
No, one person, please. But at the end of the day.
You see where I'm going, right?
I, I do see where you're going. But at the end of the day.
Concern on this side.
But at the end of the day, it doesn't look like a New England farmhouse, right? So it is row houses, it's the same type of strip development that's specifically called out as, as the town protecting against in the bylaw. And so because it is, because it doesn't look like a New England farmhouse, like Reddicker has done, like the banks have done, spending literally millions of dollars, not just to make it look like it's not a software town, right, to make it look like it's a house. To make it fit within the character of the town as shown on the, on the, on the emblem on the bylaws. Right? And, and yes, I understand that there is perhaps some ability to insert some, some some confusion between opposition against the use or opposition against the appearance. To some extent, I expect it's a little bit of both, but it's not required to be only one or the other.
No, I know, but you, you gotta understand where we're sitting here. There's, there are a lot of things we cannot deny this for. And, and, you know, it's not an easy situation to be here. So just like you're trying to preserve information for the record, so am I.
Absolutely. And, and I, and I certainly, I certainly applaud that. I'm, I'm not, I'm not against you bringing out that point. As I said, the whole purpose of the public meeting is to make sure everybody understands and there's clear public discourse.
Agreed.
Respectful discussion, so that you folks have all of the information at hand when you decide what to allow. And I understand, and I think, and I, I've explained to my clients that we may win here. And in the end, they might put something else in that theoretically wouldn't be subject to this kind of scrutiny. But I also think that it's important for the board to understand, and it is relevant, that there is discourse about the town considering and negotiating to potentially purchase both of these properties. And so that is the future development aspect that I mentioned in the Gulf Oil case that should not be the sole basis for the board's decision. And it would be a proper basis, from my perspective, to be the only reason for deciding to deny the project, was because there was some sort of potential for the town buying it or taking it by eminent domain or something like that. But at the end of the day, consideration of, of other future developments that might be either impacted or that alternate ways that this might be developed are also considerations and proper considerations for the board to consider with all of the other information that it has available to it. And look, at the end of the day, you folks are in an unenviable position. We all recognize that, and we appreciate the fact that you're willing to serve in this difficult role, right? This is not an easy decision for any of you to make. I'm sure it keeps you up at night, much like it keeps everybody else up at night. But at the end of the day, the town has trusted you to make your own independent, reasoned decision about whether this project in this location is the right project for Hamden in this location at this time. And at the end of the day, hopefully, we've shown you that the proponents, I mean, bulk of the evidence that we've provided you, and I think we've provided you plenty, leans in favor of not only suggesting that you should deny, but also frankly mandating that you deny it, irrespective of whether, and the case law is very clear, irrespective of whether all of the technical criteria may have been met and whether all of the concessions that they have made make you feel good about the, the technical construction of it, right? That's the key, that's the key thing to remember, is that the character and the diminution in value of surrounding properties in the town is effectively separate from the technical discussion that we've been having for literally hours.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And counselor, Ken.
Can I just make a couple of quick comments, and I won't labor, because I know I'm tired for a while? But I'm, I'm really glad counsel brought up the point about the Whittaker property and the making concessions to try to blend it in. Couldn't emphasize more of the concessions we made here to retain one of the, a house that's where we have the right to tear down, which is expensive to maintain, as pointed out by a board member, because it is a stored property. To blend it in, to make it look like a farmhouse-type concept, to suggest in any way, shape, or form that it's row houses, it's just a stretch. And it's, and it's, and it's a real unfortunate stretch, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna end where I started. I walked not fifty feet and saw abandoned tractor trailers, a commercial building with neon lights, with plows, with all kinds of other overgrown brush. I walked, saw another fifty feet, I saw a lineup of trash trucks right there on the main street. So let's not kid ourselves about where this is. This is not the corner, you said three times, the corner of the center. It's not. And that's why this is a, it is distinctly unique, this piece of property versus, and I'm not comparing it, although inappropriately, it was compared numerous times to another project. It is sandwiched in, which lends itself ideally to this type of use. And that's really important. The next step is to take, to, to possibly suggest that we're gonna compare a gas station storing hundreds and hundreds of gallons of gas that are routinely pumped every single day, both delivered by truck and by car, to a dry storage facility? It absolutely lacks merit and loses credibility. And, and, and I don't think I have to go on. The case is not on point, he's discussed. You, some of you have read it. It's not even close. And then we go to the, the next thing, which really, which really bothered me when I heard it. And you're, you're right on the money. It's not about who cries or yells the loudest, who's more dramatic about it. And in fact, the comments were real inappropriate about scarlet letters and threatening board members. How do you think people who are, who favorite, think it's good news, would wanna come down? Does that make sense to have that type of divisive atmosphere, when really the merits rest on the facts, which painstakingly made us go through in a good way? Three meetings with expert testimony, which leads me to my final point. I've heard over and over from the opposition about diminution in land value. You have not heard one expert come in here and tell you that this is somehow way, shape, or form gonna cause a diminution in land value. Common sense tells you it's better than a vacant property with a dilapidated house that's been sitting there for some time to have an attractive landscape, viable property that's paying taxes to the city. Arguably, common sense tells you this isn't gonna diminish anything. And you've taken steps, I have no idea where you go with this boat, but you've taken many steps to talk about things that are more costly for the project, that are more onerous to the developer, that makes sense. Not a, not a vinyl fence. You want a solid fence, a vinyl fence as opposed to a metal fence. You want arborites going up above the roof line. All of those things give you the impression, if you drove down the street absent the gate being open, you would, this would look like any other farmhouse. And again, I took one last walk around, you got a neon gas station, a gas station lit up with neon lights. You got a septic facility, truck with building with neon lights. You got a trash company across the street. So, so to somehow argue that this is not, quite frankly, I think it's a tremendous improvement to what's, what's in that area. And I think it certainly fits within the rural character with the confines that we suggested. So for all of those reasons, I wouldn't, you know, and I get it. I understand you guys are in a real difficult position. And certain members of the, of the past audience wanted to make sure you knew that by, by tossing things out like scarlet letter, which are inappropriate, don't belong in this discussion. So I'd ask you to act on the merits, approve the project, put appropriate conditions you think will protect the town, and we find something that, that works within the confines of this site as opposed to some other potential site that could end up there, which is far less attractive to the community for a variety of reasons.
One minute. I, I've got just, Counselor Pellegrino. Counselor Wilson, you, you alluded to buying this property.
Yes.
Okay. And it was brought up at the last meeting. I walked out on that, because I, I don't believe that it's in, within our purview to talk about that. But has somebody contacted you, Counselor Pellegrino, from either the town officials or anybody that's a, a butter and a poser about selling your property?
I've had many, first of all, A, I don't think it's appropriate. B, I think it's, and I'm very wary. I wanna get people on eleventh hour talking about things. I have not, I have not been contacted by any town official. I did contact the town to try to find out. I have not been contacted by any town official. I did contact the town to try to find out funding and things of that nature. My understanding it it's not available for uh, other uses. In the future, if this, let's say hypothetically, this were to pass, it doesn't mean that that couldn't still happen, but it should not be held up because someone wants to create the illusion that there's some grander scheme that's more beneficial to a certain segment of the population. Uh, that that's to me completely inappropriate.
Okay.
And no, no one, no one, no one is suggesting that it should be held up. It's 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 a point that has been specifically discussed with town officials and it's in process. And with respect to the suggestion that we somehow need experts to testify to diminution of land value, that's not accurate. The case law is very clear that landowners are entitled to testify about diminution of value. You have a written email from Reddicker Software establishing the diminution value. You have a poll that I've just taken of people indicating that they that it would it would decrease their property values. You have the evidence, all of the evidence that you need in front of it to deny this.
And I just want to say that nobody, no town official has contacted any member of this board about, you know.
No, and and that's it. And that's not necessary. And from my perspective, wouldn't be appropriate for them to contact you and try to sway your votes or anything like that.
And that's why I just want to make that.
That's why.
Thank you. Let me let me preface this. I'm gonna preface this, okay? I want something that pertains to this. I don't want to hear about. Grandstanding to buy. Okay, to spend this town's money. If I do, then I'm going to stop you.
I'd also like to save some of my time so that Mark Fienen could make some comments before we go. I'd also like to address to the board that really, even though the law precludes you from giving equal time. Our records indicate that so far you've given
Looks.
The advocates about seven hours. Of testimony and us about.
Probably three.
About sixty-three minutes.
Okay.
So if if what for us to develop a. Our, you need a little more time. You've given the other the other side plenty of time to present their case and their argument. You really haven't heard. My other point I'd like to bring out is that there's already talk of the real estate community, that they're gonna change the name of Steeple View to self-storage view. Now, we haven't even discussed the possibility of diminishing property values of people outside of a neighborhood plan in the neighborhood. But I would really like to give an opportunity for Mark Fienen to make some comments. Because you plan on closing at eight o'clock. Is that correct? We're pretty close to eight now.
Yeah, I'm I I don't know because I'm not looking at the clock. So so.
It's seven fifty-seven.
Okay.
I've had much time.
No.
I'd like to defer my time to Mark.
Okay, understand that you have counsel that represents you to this. So.
If I could also point out that the issue of equal time isn't to deny folks the right to voice their opinions. When we're in this public hearing process, a good chunk of this isn't for the opponents to say why they want the job and the opponents to say why they don't want the project, they don't want the job. It's for the planning board to understand exactly what's going on. So it's gonna take the proponents of a project a lot longer to answer our questions about the specifics of site plans.
Not seven times. You got seven hours to work.
All right, it's okay. All right, thank you. Um. I think Mary Crisetti, Mary Mary Crisetti was first. Is it Mary?
Uh, yes, Mary Crisetti, fifteen, Metro Brooklyn. Um, so I would like to speak to Mr. Pellegrino when he said that.
You got a count.
I'll speak to you that, I mean, it's common sense that this is a better project than what's there. Although we have over five hundred people who clearly don't lack common sense. And they are opposed to this project. I am concerned about the aesthetic value of this um, property and what it's going to look like. And we're not the only ones. Rural towns are going through this in America right now. The cities have been plundered and now it's coming into the rural cities and we are all finding. Crowe Creek, North Carolina, in September, just the unanimous board vote, planning board said no. And one of the members of that planning board, Jason, said. I could not vote for this because not one person came to the meeting and said, I want self-storage. And it's, I'll give you the article. That's why he said no. But I'm concerned about the health and safety of this neighborhood. Steeple View. The um, housing, uh, the Centennial Commons and the um, nursing home that we have. So as I said at another meeting, I've become more familiar with with self-storage than I ever wanted to in my life. But there is a site called Fire Engineering and it is a premier site for the training of fire engineers. And this is what they say about self-storage. Many fire departments throughout the United States have a protocol for hazmat unit response to self-storage facility fires. Based on past fire incidences involving the president, the presence of toxic chemicals. And materials. The hazmat officer and the safety chief must carefully monitor the incident. The smoke plume will also be monitored along with the water runoff. If a toxic plume is traveling toward a populated area, the incident commander will communicate to the public, close the windows, shelter in place, and will initiate an immediate evacuation of all affected residents. Sorry, not residents, area. My grandchildren sleep in my home. We have young babies in our neighborhood. We have elderly people in their nineties in our neighborhood. Please, I am asking you, do not put something in our neighborhood that requires a hazmat unit.
Ms. Crisetti, can you repeat? It was Fire Engineering.
Fire engineer.
It's it's a website. It's a, okay.
You can go to the site and it is a premier international fire engineering site to train fire engineers.
We can provide, we can provide a link to that.
I, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Um, okay. Yeah.
No way that my speaking for twenty-five to per minute. I'm running out of air.
Thank you.
Zoning.
Oh, Mark, would you state your name? I'm sorry.
Mark Fienen.
Yeah, Mark.
Better Road. Half you don't even know where Better Road is. zoning bylaws for town and Hampton, Massachusetts. Bylaws could promote the health, safety, convenience and welfare of the inhabitants by dividing the town into districts and regulating the use and construction of buildings and premises therein. You're here for forty-eight. Chapter forty-eight. Enacted. In nineteen. Fifty-four. Zoning bylaws. For the town of Hamden. Nineteen forty-two. Principal remains the same. Times changed. But it's still here in promotion for the inhabitants of the town. Now, you're only dealing with forty-eight. Not going outside that. So what you have is self-storage. And by definition. It's under retail and service uses. It's also sitting on. The water protection district. That plot of land has got about five or six overlapping circles on it. You can take them all. It doesn't attack, it doesn't go after. That doesn't even include the residents that we live. Self-storage facility. It's under the business. Under six. And it's under retail and service uses. It also tells you that it's allowed. But it also has a restriction on the overland district for the water protection. It'll tell you that the performance standards for it for the water supply is prohibited uses. Businesses and industrial uses not agricultural, which generate, treat, store or dispose of hazardous waste except for the following, and the following is all agricultural uses. So then you go to that. They can't control what you're gonna store in these facilities. But the difference between Camden and most of the other ones that you hear, you don't have a municipal water supply. It's all sitting on wells. You can talk about insurance and you can talk about whatevs. But insurance is only good for stuff after it happens. So what is your value of a residence with no water? None. So you don't have to worry about property value. So your charge would have to protect the app for for the water protections. And it says that. All hazardous materials as defined must be stored either in a freestanding container within a building or in a freestanding container above ground level with protection to contain the spill the size of the container's total storage capacity. Which you don't know what is going to be stored in. So. On your review, you don't have construction plans yet. Because why would Rafer spend his money on something that you can't build? But at the point that you're going to review this, then you can't defer to the building inspector and say, he's got to take care of it. So you're gonna have to try to address the situation in the construction thereof before it's approved. Which, if you're looking for that. Precedence on that would be town of Hamden Planning Board review of one twenty-two East Long Island Road. It's sitting on a containment slab. If you construct the facility and it's on a containment slab, which is nothing more than a depression that will hold whatever is in that and into that um, storage facility. Then it won't reach out into the ground. Because it's stuck on the concrete. Now, they're playing with porous pavement. As soon as it spills and it rolls off the door, it's in the ground. So you gotta take that into account. Then the other question that I had was. Probably won't like this. But. The planning board made grant required special permit only upon finding a proposed use meets the following standards, which is a performance which is protecting the groundwater. And when you get so. Which is even worse. It's easier when I'm sitting down. All uses of. Where is? Special permit part.
Section.
It implies that you can issue a special permit.
That is, it's section ten.
Which.
Or are you?
No, actually, it's not.
Okay, so you're still in the water.
That's all ten, ten words, but. Um, special permit, it's six point one one set.
That's interesting.
Uses allowed by special permit obtained from the planning board. A, commercial. Industrial. Governmental or educational uses. Which are allowed in the underlying district and which are now prohibited as section six point one one five. Well, you got a business. Thing's not commercial. It's not industrial. It's not governmental. And it's not educational. So the question comes up is. Can you have, can you wish for a special permit? Because it doesn't meet the criteria from the water protection district.
I'm going. Thank you. All right, um, closing comments. Counselor Wilson.
I'm stating what I need to say.
Counselor.
Unless you have some questions, I think we've edited this.
Yeah. Um, so I think what we're gonna look for, correct me if I'm wrong, is another set of revise these plans, okay, with what we've asked you for. In other words, the setbacks with the I'd rather not put it in conditions. I'd rather. I'd rather have you drop a set of plans, okay? Yeah, set of plans like um, with what we've asked for. Um, Jason wants the fence. Show that, please. Me, I'd like to, you know, move the arbivites closer to the fence away from the road in the front. Um. Things of that nature. Give me. Uh, the septic system on the property, okay? Um. However. And you can include a, you know, line drawing. I'm sure that the facility that you're or the company is gonna buy the storage units from has. Cut sheets or some cut sheet or a line. Seeing. No other business here, so I'm. We're going to, we'd like to stand. This.
Can I ask one question? Please, I've never asked a question yet in this.
So you got a statement.
Carolyn Dunmore in Allen Street. This gentleman just talked. Did you, did you all listen to what he said?
Yes.
Continue this and continue this and continue this. And I know that you have to have certain things. I understand that. But this is like going over and over and over. It seems like to us, me too, that you're not listening.
Okay.
Okay, that's all it is.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that.
Okay.
How many people feel that?
No, stop. I'd like to continue this um, to another mutually agreed on time.
So many guys, it would be helpful to have. Did Rafer, did you get all the, did you get all the notes or do you want us to forward over what?
I think I have.
I just.
I took notes. Or something. I understand those. So.
Just didn't know. I can have this, give this over to Joy and have her.
I'll tell you what I have.
Quiet, please.
Fence moving back along the residential property.
Quiet, please. Subject, timeout, hold on. Counselor. I'm asking for quiet so we can hear. Thank you.
The fence along the residential pushed, pulled back. You want the arbivite show four feet spacing in the proximal distance from the fence. You want the septic you've talked about and you want the line drawn from heights of some evidence of the height of the peak height of the storage.
Yep, and then um, there was fall and spring pruning cleanup on the O and N plant. And then an annual reporting requirement on the O and N plant.
Lawn cutting on there too, or just?
Yeah, I mean, I want just. I want to. Yeah, the dumpster you can remove.
And a dumpster removed.
Now. That was, that's gonna be. Yeah. Okay, um. Jeff.
Jeff Crisetti. I just want to know, I know the board has to discuss everything in the open. When do you digest what Mark Fienen said? And when do you discuss that or is that just, how do you guys, you know, tackle what he said?
Okay, that, basically what would happen is you end up. What I'm looking to do is close the public hearing at some time. At that point in time, we deliberate or talk amongst ourselves in a in a public view, okay? Um, and that's what we would call a regular meeting, okay? So. We would discuss it. We would come up with what Mark had said and we would discuss it amongst ourselves. If they're meeting that criteria or not, okay? So that's how that would be done.
Very good, just my question, probably a question for a lot of people. How do we come to closure?
Yeah, and, and like you said, um, ma'am, we're, we're working on, okay?
Thank you.
So I'm getting as tired as.
Plans, we can close the hearing, once the hearing's closed, then we can deliberate.
There's two ways to do this, we leave the public hearing open and we deliberate. Um, or you close the public hearing and at that point in time, there's no more, no more information that comes into us, okay? So, um, we've, I don't know, and that's up to the board to decide, okay, how they want to do it. So again, we've got some new members, they can think about it, if they'd like to, and it, all the deliberations are in the open. Okay, all right, yeah.
They gotta go check it out. Just, just because I said it, doesn't mean that I know what I'm talking about.
No.
No, the board, they're here for forty-eight, so the points that I brought up, they gotta go check it out.
Yeah, and that's.
And so, you know what I mean, so it's not, it's not like they're saying, that's it, no, they still have to go determine on what I said is correct.
And we would, we would address that.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. That being said. Yeah, when, when do we do this again? Um, I'm gonna, the tenth, the tenth is, um, already occupied. We, uh, we're not gonna meet on the twenty-fourth. Pardon, that's, that's Thanksgiving Eve, okay? So we're not gonna meet on the twenty-fourth. So I'd be open to, uh, a suggestion if the board would like to on the seventeenth. If that's acceptable.
And that's fine for me.
Yeah. That's a Wednesday. Is, is that acceptable to you? Counselor Wilson, does that work for you? Let's. Um, I got it at six fifteen again, is that okay? In case we have some business like you said, and I, I apologize, we ran over a little bit. Okay. So what we're looking at is, um, November seventeenth. Yeah, so a motion to adjourn. And we have, yeah, well, the motion, and you.
Move that we continue to the hearing to. Eleven seventy twenty. Yeah. Motion to adjourn, so.